First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have approval, motion to approve and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Citizens to be heard, anybody out there that wants to talk, if it's not on the agenda. I think you guys are on the agenda, okay, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes for October the eighth.
So.
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of corrections.
Okay.
If we can do that before. Kalina, on page five, in about the middle of the page, if you can kind of point out here for you. The sentence where it says, "One of their reasons was to take the 30-day time period to make that decision." That really should say, "One of their reasons was they only had a 30-day time period to make that decision." They had a 30-day period to make the appeal, so. And then also then, a little bit further down, it said, "The DNR had 54 conditions on the permit and were seeking further conditions." That just needs to be changed because the DNR wasn't seeking further conditions, it was the Buffalo Red Watership District who was seeking further conditions. So, you know, I suggest that, say, DNR had 54 conditions on the permit, that the Buffalo Red Watership District were seeking further conditions that were needed. And then the very next sentence, it states, "They had accepted additional conditions," and I think that should state, "The diversion authority had accepted additional conditions that the Watership Board requested."
My motion will include those changes.
Second.
Any other changes, or now we've got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay. Accept the minutes, ask amended. Approval of the bills and measures?
And a move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. With that, we'll go on to MetroCOC, MetroGrove 2045, a request for approval of Resolution Michael Maddox, Transportation Planner for MetroCOC in the East End here, you're welcome.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning. And you want to tell us today about MetroGrove?
That's right. So, I'll start us off this morning, I'm Cindy Gray, Executive Director for MetroCOC. And before I even started at MetroCOC, this plan was underway, so it's been going for about a year and a half now. And, you know, we gave about an hour presentation on this at lunchtime last week, so we'll really try to condense it into your timeframe today. And this is, this just shows the process of carrying out this plan, that we gather a lot about existing conditions throughout the whole process, we're talking about goals and policies, and kind of evolving those as we go through the process. We look at future growth and how that works on the existing roadway network, plus projects that we know are funded and in the works right now. And then we look at what the future needs are, and can we pay for those future needs, and so, and what can we pay for? And that helps us prioritize projects. And so, we have a ton of public and stakeholder input opportunities throughout the process. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael, he's the project manager for this, and he's been with it the whole way.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Cindy said, in the development of this plan, we've started off with some goals and objectives that we want to integrate into the plan, and you can see that these goals and objectives here were used not only to drive the policy direction of the plan, but used to drive the prioritization of projects as well. Here are just a couple of the stated goals, kind of our broad-based main goals that are included in the plan, but there are many goals and policies that are included in the plan in different sections, individual modal sections. The plan, or MetroCOC focuses on all surface transportation modes of transportation, so roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, freight, we do get into some rail as well. And so we've addressed those elements in each individual section of the plan. Here are some policies that we've included in the plan. I'll call out one in particular, under the roadway congestion policies, that we're really focusing on balancing the livability and mobility of the region. And what that basically means is that we are looking at choosing routes that have mobility focus, and looking at routes that have more of a livability, that people, it won't create a barrier to other forms of transportation, and make areas better for pedestrian and bicycle transportation. And so we're really looking at balancing, when we're looking at congestion or capacity or individual routes that go through especially suburban or areas with high households, and looking at how those corridors move traffic and how residents get traverse those routes. But also looking at system connectivity as a whole, and just, you know, how the system is connected to one another. We know that because of the interstate and drains, that sometimes the roadway network can become disconnected, which puts a burden on certain routes. Get into bicycle and pedestrian, this one, I'll just focus on that, we're really looking at developing a trail network that's separate from roadways. A lot of the trails that we do put on are what we call side paths that are along roadways. We've heard throughout the public participation that this is not necessarily the most attractive avenue for people to walk and bike, so looking at where we can have those off-street facilities. Transit, we didn't focus very highly on transit within this plan because transit does their own five-year plan, separate from this document, their own five-year update, and we're actually embarking on that study in 2020. And so we do, we did integrate a lot of the goals that they've already stated through our planning efforts with them. There are a lot of other goals that we've, that we're looking at in this plan, again, that balancing livability and mobility is in there, but there are a number of new areas that we'll need to focus on when this region becomes a transportation management area, which basically means that we go over 200,000 population. And with that, we have to do congestion management efforts and look at data and gather different kinds of data. We know that there are some new technologies that may be coming down the road within the life of this plan, given that there's a 25-year horizon on this plan, and so we just wanted to, you know, pay some due notice to some of that technology and how that might affect the transportation network. So, a little bit of existing conditions, currently we set, we look at a lot of metrics that impact the transportation network. Probably the largest one here is safety, so we do a safety analysis in our region, and we've been doing this, collecting data and looking at performance measurement of how many fatalities and serious injury crashes there are throughout the region. However, this is just a listing that we do every MTP cycle of the 20 highest crash locations in the region. And you can see there's a high correlation between the corridors that have commercial uses, mostly retail uses, and crash incident. And we know that, there's a lot of traffic there, there's a lot of access points, there's a lot of, those intersections have a lot of conflict points. So it's not anything, you know, new that we've seen. However, what I'll say is that just because they're high crash locations doesn't make them dangerous, it's just they're the highest in our area, so we just want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to mitigate crashes in those locations.
And then on the Moorhead side, and the Clay County side, the one at Eighth Street and is being studied right now, right, with the 1075 study?
Correct. So another metric that we track is existing pavement conditions, this is a page directly out of the plan, here's that map blown up, this is the pavement conditions on our NHS routes. What we kind of see from this map is that within the life of this plan, the interstate in our area, both on the Minnesota side and the North Dakota side, will need to be reconstructed. That's what the pavement models of both NDOT and MINDOT tell us. And so, in this plan, we specifically call out that project and say, at some time during the life of this plan, plan for the interstate to be torn up, so.
Is that 94?
94 and 29.
Didn't they do it, weren't you 29?
They've done a lot of outside of our area, but not in the heart. And we know there are some maintenance activities that need to occur, like on the Tri-Stack and on the, the bridge in West Fargo, and I'll actually call that out here, there's a bridge.
Yeah, MINDOT has told us that they are planning to do reconstruction of 94 in, within the next 10 years, so, you know, we definitely want to look at this in terms of operations and study it.
What kind of a length would that go from the river, or how far east would it go?
I know it would go through our metropolitan area, I can't tell you how far east beyond that.
Okay. Yep, so we also not only look at pavement condition, but bridge condition, there's only one deficient bridge in our region, and you can see that's over in West Fargo, there's a red dot there, and that's the bridge that gives access from US 10 to I-94. There's a point, that'd be great. Yep, right there. NDOT is aware of this deficiency, and they're planning on doing some work on that structure to get it back up to standard. But otherwise, we are meeting and exceeding all of our pavement and bridge condition standards. So as we get into kind of the traffic discussion of the plan, it's good to mention that the base year for this plan is actually 2015, is when we did a lot of our data development. We took traffic counts and bought household and job data, and so all of the base level information in this plan is 2015. And you can see in this plan, it's kind of interesting, I always like to call out the Cheyenne Street Corridor project, because there was a, yeah, I lost the, there was a high level of congestion along that corridor, and in fact, kind of a dangerous situation with traffic queuing on the interstate. And that was one of the highest priorities of the last plan, and now it has just about done with construction, I believe, at least the interchange is, and you'll see in the future maps that that red will go away. So that's a direct output of the MTP planning process, is that we program that project. So we'll get into some of the existing network and the future growth that we're seeing. So as you can see, this is 2045, existing plus committed, this is basically looking at households and jobs out into the future, and then using that to generate traffic and put it on the existing system. So everything that, the projects that we've done up until now, and that we have programmed in a document that we call the Transportation Improvement Program, that looks four years out into the future. So everything that's funded within that plan, and that's currently being constructed, is put into the model. And you can see that red disappears there at Cheyenne Street because of those improvements. But this is a little bit of a misnomer, because we actually load the system with traffic that's occurring in the southwest region, and kind of in the south, in the east, in Moorhead. However, there's no roadway network down there, and so it's loading all of that traffic onto sometimes gravel roadways and roadways that were not designed to handle that traffic. We know in the future, though, that there are going to be roadways that are developed in those areas as neighborhoods come online, and so this is not necessarily the best, and we'll get into the fiscally constrained network.
It's really for the purpose of helping identify future needs, this analysis is.
Yep.
So what is that, you know, for years, you know, we've gone back and forth with Clay County and Cass County and Fargo in terms of a future bridge across the Red River South. Is that being addressed through the study?
It is, actually.
Yeah, we do have some graphics that'll show that, and it's not within the fiscally, beyond right-of-way preservation, it's not within the fiscally constrained.
Okay, so it's not showing the need, is that what that means?
Well, it's partly that, because there's just limited growth in south of Moorhead, and it's partly because, so in terms of, you know, where traffic is going to, it's not that there isn't a demand, it's that the alternative routes like 52nd Avenue or I-94 haven't really gotten overly congested yet with our 2045 growth. Now, that remain, you know, as we, as we go, five years, you know, every five-year cycle on this plan, it's, I think it's bound to show up at some point. So then the question is, well, do we widen, you know, does 52nd Avenue become, and 60th on the Clay County side, does that become a six-lane arterial, because that would have a significant amount of impact to development on the Fargo side? Or do we start, you know, heighten the planning and programming of the 76th Avenue corridor? And so that's, we definitely want that corridor to be preserved, and it really is the only opportunity as you go south towards 112th or towards that next interchange to the, to the south, so.
So remind me, in the 76, that's on the Fargo side?
That's on the Fargo side, yes, and it lines up with 67, County Road 67, 80th Avenue on the Clay County side.
Okay, County Road 67, okay, okay. Question. What's the current population of the MetroCOC area right now?
It's about 212,000 for metropolitan area now.
And then in this 2045 projection, what was that projection that they made?
Good question.
245 or 250?
I think it's in the 250 or 260 range.
At least, it's shockingly higher.
Right, but the 2020 numbers, we have been talking about, that obviously will change that.
Right, 2020 census will, right now, the 2012 is a census estimate for 2018, and our metro area grows about 4,500 a year, so by 2020, we're probably looking at about, you know, over 220. And so, I believe the 2045 projection is around 300,000. It's, it's, yeah, and then, and household growth is over 30,000, job growth is around 50,000, so, I mean, I'm giving, I'm drawing from memory here, which isn't always perfect, not even close, but that's, yeah, it's, it's, you know, significant, and kind of takes your breath away.
Sustained growth, yeah.
And we do have a plan on our website that we used for these modeling efforts, it's a data development plan that you can look at, and we had a demographer on that plan, and they did a demographic study of the area and projected population out to 2045. I just can't come up with that number off the top of my head. So now we'll get into some of the future needs. We'll see that in 2045, trips will increase somewhere around 40 percent, vehicle miles traveled, somewhere around 65 percent increase, vehicle hours traveled, so about 70 percent between 65 and 70 percent. Your average trip length will go up approximately 20 percent, and that's really due to where households are located in comparison to where jobs are located. A lot of the growth is occurring kind of on the fringe areas. But average speeds will not, will only decrease by a small percentage, 1 to 3 percent. And we kind of see that there's a lot of capacity in the system, the system operates fairly well, and we think that the system that we have is pretty good going off into the future, at least with these population estimates and traffic estimates. And so, we're really focusing on that livability versus mobility again factor, when we're looking at travel, where should traffic be going, and looking at the efficiency of the system rather than adding capacity. So getting into some of those ADT thresholds, the one I'd like to call out is on I-94 at the Red River Bridge, we're predicting approximately 100,000 cars a day on that bridge. We've know, in conversations with NDOT Fargo District, that there have been traffic volumes this summer around the 80,000 mark, and so I don't think it's too far off of an estimate for 20 to 25 years in the future to have this level of traffic on that bridge.
I think during some, during periods of construction, North Dakota DOT said 84,000 was kind of a sustained number for quite a bit of July.
What is the I-20, I-94 at Tri-Stack, what intersection is that?
The Tri-level.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep. So again, we did a very robust fiscal analysis of this, in this plan, and that's basically to estimate what we could likely receive in federal funding out to the year 2045. There were a lot of assumptions made. When we become a TMA, we will get a direct allocation of federal funds that could be spent in this region. On the North Dakota side, that would be about 12 and a half million a year, however, on the Minnesota side, it's only about a million a year. And that's a function of the number of MPOs there are in the state of Minnesota versus there are in the state of North Dakota, and the population of the Minnesota side of our urban area.
So does the, the TMA replace the MPO on the North Dakota side, is that how that?
It's just a different level of MPO.
Yeah.
There's two tiers, it's a two-tier system.
We'll just evolve, transform into that, and it brings with it additional reporting requirements, data, data analysis, like Michael said, additional responsibilities in terms of managing that 12 and a half million, and making sure that it gets spent in a timely manner, and not that projects don't lag, and, you know, DOT wants us to spend that money every year, so we'll have to be working with our local jurisdictions to phase in projects and, you know, that use that amount but don't require more than that. And, and Michael was probably already going to say that, but say this, but in Minnesota, there's so many different ways of funding stated routes and things like that, that it is not surprising, I guess, that the MPO amount is significantly less, just because of the funding source.
So, if I can, so the, the MPO on the Minnesota side, that would stay at about a million dollars, you said, right? Is that?
Yeah, our Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, which is the federal funds we receive for the roadway network, would be about a million a year.
And how big, how big of an area is the MPO on the Minnesota side? It's obvious, all of Moorhead.
Well, our, our urban area is Moorhead and Dilworth.
Okay.
And that's where those funds can be used.
And that's where, okay, that's what I was getting at, is where those funds can be used, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, and like Cindy said, there are so many different funding ways, and especially bonding, Minnesota bonds for a lot of their major projects, so we see that this could, that million dollars can do a lot of maintenance projects, but not much else.
There's also a lot of MINDOT money, though, that comes in, and you guys have a seat as the MPO on that district.
The area transportation partnership?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah.
So as we get into the future, you can see this is the projected funding over the life of this plan. On the Minnesota side, it's about 31 million, and on the North Dakota side, it's about 361 million. We do think on the, at least on the North Dakota side, that that is enough to meet the needs of the area, both system preservation and system expansion, and some of the other modal investments that we would like to make. However, we do not control monies that are destined for the interstate, those are controlled by the DOTs, and so we did include those projects in our plan, but we just had to say that those aren't fiscally constrained. So this is the project, all of the fiscally constrained projects in our area. As you can see, they're, they're mostly in our urban area, except for the, some of the interstate reconstruction, and so not necessarily some, you know, not a lot of impact to Clay County, I would say, but, yep, but we do have a, a bridge project, a future bridge project on 52nd, just to reconfigure, that bridge has already been designed for four-lane facility, but the roadway needs to be reconfigured in order to meet that, we'll see that, that going, and that, that project necessary in the future.
Was there a date on that?
What's that?
Is there a projected date on that?
Yeah, it's in the near, or in the midterm.
Okay.
Yep. We've seen a lot of growth stall because of the diversion project, so not a lot of development has been occurring in the south area. However, on the Horus side, it's still occurring because they're dry, but they're more impacting the Cheyenne Street Corridor. But as the diversion moves forward, and growth is allowed to continue past 52nd on the, you know, in that area, we see the operations of 52nd being impacted.
Which is even more important, why you guys should be active in those diversion authority meetings. I mean, if we're talking about future, I mean, I know I've said this at a large number of meetings lately, but continue there so that we can use the information in the plans.
And I think we will, I've spoken with the Chair, Chair Scherling at Cass County about participating in the land committee, and their joint powers agreement limits us from being an ex officio member in that. It's currently the ex officio, the flexibility that they have is used to give Horus, the city of Horus, a seat at that, in that committee, but, but we can, she said that we should feel free to attend, and so we will start doing that, but.
Okay, can I just add, the red dotted line that goes west of the diversion area, what is that?
There are lands being acquired for the diversion that exceed the amount that's needed, because most of the farmers don't just want to sell the required strip, they want to sell a quarter section or a half section, or whatever is affected. And so that's what's, what's happening. And with the, when the Cass County Comprehensive Plan was being done a couple of years ago, the county engineer saw an opportunity to provide a West Ring Road, which has always been part of the discussion of, you know, long-range transportation planning in our metropolitan area, and it's what resulted in the 336 corridor being what it is today. And, you know, it's a fantastic facility on the east side as a ring route, and something I use on a regular basis going to and from Minnesota and my home and everything, so have a lot of appreciation for that, and MINDOT and Clay County have been integral part of getting that developed. And, but on the west side, it's just, it's just been a struggle. Corridors like 52nd Avenue that have been identified in the past have been kind of, you know, clogged up with traffic signals and that, and haven't really facilitated that as a ring route. And so Jason Benson, the Cass County engineer, really started looking at this and the availability of land on the, on the west side for that type of a facility. So that's the planning area for that, we can't really designate a for-sure route, but that, that would be the study area.
That's the concept, that would be there, would be, that would serve similar to the 336 on the North Dakota side?
Yes, that's the concept, it would have an interchange with the interstate and be a limited access type of facility. There are county roads in that area, especially between, on the north side of I-94, that get used in a similar manner already by people heading, like, say, between Grand Forks and Bismarck, for example, who don't want to traverse our urbanized area.
Those are, those, the 336 and that one would, you know, I think Fargo and Warren has a tendency to be further north and south, and east and west, and I liken that to when the Minneapolis-St. Paul area did, did the 494 and 694. It was kind of that same concept, to kind of get everything away from, or the highway traffic just being able to bypass.
Right.
And just give that a better ease of access to the people that, that live on the south or in the north as well. Because we know that, you saw the volumes there, that farther off from this, this plan as growth continues in our area, and we do predict growth continuing, that the internal operations of the interstate system will be severely impacted if there are alternate routes.
Right.
So these are just a number of projects in our, in our plan, I'll kind of just skip through them. This is the vision plan that we had mentioned earlier, and this includes that, that bypass or ring route there in the, in Clay County, you can see going through Saban and out, and out to the interstate with 52nd Avenue Bridge.
76th.
Or 76th Avenue Bridge, I'm sorry.
88th on the Minnesota side.
Yep. But there are a number of, of different interchanges that Moorhead was interested in, you can see on 55th, and the other one would be an extension of 12th Avenue.
Yes.
Yep, and then some improvements to 336 as well, to solidify that, that ring route over there.
And there's another, isn't there a, a proposed exit between 336 and?
Where that came away is the.
Yeah, so Fifty Second Street.
Is that what it is? Yeah. So, that, is that, does that show up in your model two, your plan?
Yeah, I believe that's the.
I, I, it's pretty small.
I can't.
Yeah.
But it's there, anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's the one on I-94 there, if I can get the.
See it on the screen.
Right.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, is that it right there? Okay, okay, there you go, okay.
However, we, we've no, we've received SOV letter from the airport, solicitation of use letter. We know that structures in that area are not permitted because of the flight line, and so, we're going to have to look at that very closely when we're ready.
From the Moorhead Airport.
From, yeah.
The other issue is the way station and so.
Yeah. So, there are a number of issues that we know. However, these projects are kind of far off in our plan, and we're not able to fund them, and that's why they're kind of in this visionary portion of the plan.
But I think it's important that route coming out of Saban is a gravel road. And so, if it is on a vision.
Yep.
It needs to be on our county vision as well.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure to carry for, forward those visionary projects in the plan. For instance, that ring road discussion has been in our plans for decades. So, we wanted to make sure to, to bring that forward.
I, I know a long time ago, when we were talking about this, there was also, do, do you still, do you still sign things where it says future corridor or something like that, or was?
Arterial road.
Yeah.
Yeah, limited access, high, future limited access, high-volume arterial.
Yeah, do, do you, do you still do that type of thing?
We, we do not, but in the past, MetroCog worked with the county engineers to try to get those signs out, out on the roads, you know, on the perimeter. And that's something we could, we could do again. We haven't done that for many years, as far as I know. That was, that was back in the nineties that that was put into place. And I, you know, those, yeah, those served a good purpose.
Well, I, you know, I, I guess my, my concern is, is you start, you know, if you have people buying land or finding, wanting different uses for that, you know, not realizing, you know, what the future needs of the community is going to be in those areas, it can become harder to make those plans later.
And I, I agree with you. I think that's something maybe we should seriously talk about. That route specifically has had a number of new, new homes built on it in the last seven or eight years, and that would.
It might be something that the planning commission should look at, too.
Right.
I mean, just, I mean, it doesn't mean that you exclude development, but you certainly have to, I think.
Disclose that there's a plan.
Disclose that, that this, this probably will be coming at some point in time in the future.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
We can work with the county engineers, we can.
Yeah.
We'll bring that up at one of our future meetings and, and.
And Commissioner Moser serves on our planning commission, too, so she can probably maybe see about getting that as an agenda item on there, too.
Good point.
All right, yeah, I just, calling out those projects we already talked about. So, there are a number of bicycle and pedestrian projects in the plan. One of particular importance is the Heartland Trail. I know Dan Farnsworth in our office has been working very diligently on that planning effort that runs through Clay County there. I believe this was an alignment that was kind of put together at the beginning of that planning effort. However, I'm not sure that the, this alignment is necessarily solidified, but it's kind of what we're operating on currently and what's in our bicycle and pedestrian plan. So, this is the, all of the bike projects that we have planned within the project. Oh, go ahead.
You, you may know, you may be aware of this, but that project is, is currently in the proposed bonding bill, and for, I think that it was on the tour for the legislature recently. And I, I think it probably came in at a point where it's going to be kind of a low priority this time around, but it would allow it to rise as time goes on.
And then this is the, oop, sorry, the vision plan for bike and pedes, all of those projects that are not fiscally constrained. And so, last slide here, there are some recommendations that have come out of the study on things that we should, that we should look at in the next five years before we update the plan. Again, it's kind of funny that we're already planning on our, our next update and looking at the steps that we'll be, need to take. But a, as we go forward, looking at how the interstate operates, given some of our model outcomes, some future corridor studies, especially Trunk Highway Ten in Dilworth, we're currently, we're doing a US-1075 corridor study because MINDOT has said in 2025, they're going to come and reconstruct US-1075. And the limits of that project are Twenty-Fourth Avenue in the south, and then it goes up Eighth there, and then US-10 from the river to Eighth. And then the, the two, the current alignment of US-1075 and the proposed realignment, and then following US-1075 out to the intersection, and then following out to Thirty-Fourth Street. So, that's the current, but where we leave off on, in the Dilworth line, then we, we need to pick that up and then go to three-three-six and, and look at the needs for that corridor, as that will likely be the next project that they've said maybe occur shortly after that 2025 project, if they get funding. No. Okay. So, that, that's just some of the, the, the projects that we know that we're going to be studying within the next couple of years after the completion of this planning effort.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And with this, but do you need a resolution that the?
That is correct.
Do you support the plan or not support it, whatever?
Yes, we have a, we're, we need resolutions of support for the plan from each jurisdiction before we can get our final Federal Highway Administration approval of our plan.
Okay, we got Resolution 2019-Dax 37 in front of you.
Let me move a pool.
Second. Any further discussion? Now, we got a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion approved.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Having that, we'll move up to Tim, Internal Funds to Replace Upgrade of Time Data Storage and Equipment in the County Data Center.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tim.
Okay, so I have two separate requests here that are somewhat similar. The first request is a upgrade to our existing data storage appliance in our data center. That's our data storage for all county departments. We're getting somewhat critically low on space on that device, and we're requesting an upgrade. The, the second request is a, an actual equipment replacement of our Caseworks data storage device. Caseworks is the system where we have eleven counties that we host here at Clay County. Those funds are collected with the hosting, the hosting bills that we send out every year. So, the, the county production storage device, that, the funds are in the equipment replacement fund for that device.
So, you say these eleven counties there, that we do, we approve this, that's going to be a burden or a cost.
Well, it's supposed to be collected from those counties.
You've already collected from those counties?
Yes.
They're continually collected, correct?
Correct. We do an annual billing each year, and in that billing, a portion of that goes towards county staff costs, and a portion of it goes towards equipment replacement to maintain that hosting environment. And there are enough funds to, to cover this cost.
Okay. So, the eighty-four, four-sixty-two, those funds, we have set aside for this already?
Correct, yep.
And then the other one, the eighty-four nine-eight-six, that's internal service funds you want to use? Is that, is that?
That's correct.
Um, do we know what we have in internal service funds for that, replacement of that, or?
The total? I do not. I, I talked to Lori last week, and she confirmed that there was funds available for this.
I know, just for, for example, when we do, when we do our highway stuff, you know, we usually, usually has, you know, this was the cost of this particular machine, this is how much we have in there. And then, are, are we, are we taking extra out to do this, or is there still a surplus? And I, I guess it'd just be nice to know that. I, I'm assuming, I trust that you need it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, we've met with almost every department, getting critically low on space, and their, their data needs are increasing, you know, restoring larger type files like video and, and images. So, our, our, our need is, is increasing quickly. Now, the, the IT equipment is done a little bit differently than the, you know, we have this discussion, I think, every year regarding our IT equipment. Lori can explain it better than I, but I'm kind of logged into.
It's a lump sum.
Yeah.
I suppose it's difficult to control, manage hundreds and hundreds of individual pieces, I suppose.
Right, and, and a lot of our PCs are, you know, under a thousand dollars. So, those aren't capitalized the same as, you know, even though we might spend eighty thousand dollars in one year on PCs.
You put that into your budget?
Well, those are still, those are still.
Internal services?
Paid for out of internal services, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure how exactly Lori does that in the background, but.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the request. I think it's definitely warranted. I understand the need and the data piece, but I agree with Commissioner Campbell. I need a little better understanding about the internal service fund and what's on the horizon in that piece, so.
Another second. Any further discussion? Okay, well, I'd, we have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, with that, we'll go into committee reports. I think I'm going to start out. Mine will be the shortest, you know. Well, last week, I can give you a report on what I did in Nashville, but we'll let that go. The week before, I was at the Wild West Watershed Board, and there, they're talking about buying out some flood-prone area north of Hendrum. And the other thing they're talking about is the same thing that we're talking about here at Clay County, is the land that they lease or own, should they sell it, or should they keep on? Where's, where's the best thing? Oh, Lori, did you want to add on to that internal service fund, or?
Well, I can just explain, this particular item, Tim's items are lump sum, and this, so this one didn't have a specific amount for it. But we have over six hundred thousand in the unallocated area, which this applies to the whole county. So, I think that's a good place to take it.
Okay.
And then, and then that's, that's replenished then through?
Correct.
The annual budget process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming up, Lori.
Made good time.
Must've been watching TV. Yeah, I mean, they got, like I said, they already got the same situation we do. The land that they own, should they keep it, or should they should sell it, you know, where is it more profitable? And the discussion was held on that. The other thing I did, I went to, oh, that bus route, probably Jenny talked about it last week, the, the, they're starting the.
Rural transportation.
The Lakes and Prairie Community Action Partnership, they're doing the bus route, and I attended the Holly one, and they had, I guess, very interesting, I mean, to see what, what can come out of this, you know. There's transportation available for these people, and they're doing a good thing there. And the one thing I did, I met with this Holly Dutton, she was at, at each presentation there. I met with her, and I said, well, we should explain this to the townships, you know, because the townships evidently weren't there at the meeting. It was just, they met at the senior citizen, but there was a few people that showed up. So, I asked her to make a presentation at the township meeting that was coming up, I think, in November eighteen or something like that. So, I think they'll be there at that, at that meeting to explain that further to the townships. Okay, Jim, you got everything?
Very good.
Jenny?
Sure. Last week, Commissioner Campbell and I had some discussions with our highway engineer about the large amount of road concerns that we had been getting. And they worked with the Sheriff's Department to put out a press release about the state of the roads, and we're, it's been a challenge to get to them. And so, I just publicly want to say that we've really been working on those concerns. And I know they continue, especially now with this extra rain, my phone has been ringing a lot. So, just, if there are specific concerns, I encourage people to reach out to the Highway Department or one of us to relay those concerns. I have had several conversations with different individuals over the last week in regards to county lands. I had an individual talking about a hayland lease on some property in Elkton Township, and then had a area trail, trail builders group that was interested in possibly putting bike trails on one of our, on the future landfill site on North Highway Ten. Anyways, included, encouraged them to reach out to us and get on that county lands meeting that we'll be having in November. So, hopefully, they'll do that. Had a law library, one, one issue was that we approved the West Law contract that was needing to be approved for the end of the month. But other than that, that concludes my reports.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you. On the sixteenth, we had a diversion meeting with the executive group, and we had a visit from Major General Toy, was here, and he, he spent a day out looking at the project and the work being done, and certainly gave us, you know, strong encouragement and backing by the US Corps that they still want to, this is a still top priority to them. He said that in the Saint, in the Saint Paul District, he wanted to, he wanted to be able to see the top two projects for that entire district. And, and of course, this was one of the two that was chosen by the Saint Paul District for him to come into view. So, it was nice to see him here. On Thursday morning, we had our West Central Regional Juvenile Detention Quarterly Meeting. And there, Tom from Construction at Jerrys gave an update on the project. We did talk about the contingencies and, and that outline as far as what we would do for it, similar to what we showed here at last week's meeting. We talked a little bit about the future food service, and that'll be, the preparation will be done from our correctional facility and brought there. And I think that's kind of a review of that. And then, yesterday, we had a diversion authority chairs coordinating meeting, and there's, as a matter of fact, that's where our current board chair is today. They're, they left for Washington DC this morning. They have several meetings going on with OMV and, and the Corps and other, you know, legislators there, working on that project. We talked a little bit more about the next steps with the WIFIA. That's the funding program that we've been invited to partake in and have been approved. And that process is a long process. There's a calendar event set stretches out an entire year before that's actually done. And John Shockley is working on that, and he's doing an amazing job with that. Let's see, I want to make sure, that, I guess that concludes my report.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. I had one other item, the Buffalo, we got these packets, but the Buffalo Red Watershed did go to Wilkin County on the fifteenth, and they approved both resolutions for consideration for 2020.
Commissioner Gross, on the sixteenth, participated in central administration meeting. We talked about the campus, campus road project that finally was able to be completed and looks, looks very nice out there. Talked about the preparations that's, that are taking place in, in the boardroom here. Talked about the preparations that's, that are taking place in, in the boardroom here to, as this becomes a magistrate courtroom here in the future. We don't have any, any set dates yet, but they're working towards, towards that. Open enrollment started this past Thursday. And again, deadline for that is November eighth. The benefit of kind of pushing it back with, with the enrollment is that it'll allow some of our employees to also look outside on the open market. Because of the changes that we made this year, the HR has provided three different open enrollment informational meetings. And we had over a hundred employees that participated in those three sessions. So that was, that was great to see. We also discussed a safety committee, the unannounced drill that they did in the family service center this last month, some of the, the benefits that they, that they saw in some of the areas that we need to, to shore up. So that was beneficial. We talked about the network, network storage issue that was brought up this morning. Also would note that the speed bumps have been removed out in the parking lots. And encourage our employees and our citizens to continue to, to, to be careful in those different areas. Met with Darren and Kirk about some ongoing coverage of the window in, in HR and Solid Waste to make sure that we're serving the public properly. Also participated yesterday in the diversion chair meeting that Commissioner Campbell has mentioned. Just, I did provide you each packets and agenda items for our District 4 AMC meeting. Again, it's going to be a little bit different than maybe what our previous district meetings. We're actually going to have an agenda that focuses on, on funding for, for road projects and then trying to work together as counties to, to look, go through some different options and come forward with, with the best plan. I have invited Dave Overbow, he'll also be attending. Governor Walz has, has come out with a bonding tour. He is going to be here in Morehead on October 29th. The timing, time is not yet set, but I do know that our transfer station is one of the areas that will be toured and discussed. And I have, just to continue to follow up, I have, we reached out to Becker County in regards to the wild rice manager issue. I have not, have not had any, I guess, response back to our invitation to meet next week. Mike Brett Force was here last week when I was gone. He was, I think he was here for the juvenile center meeting. But I've not heard anything yet at this point. I'll follow up with that. That concludes my report.
Just to enlighten me a little bit, you said the Buffalo Watershed, Wilken County approved it. So that, does that mean Wilken County would...
They just need one political subdivision to approve it.
So that includes Clay County too then or...
It includes all of it.
Correct, yes.
And the tax will show up for every Clay County property?
Yep.
In spite of it?
It's the agreement.
Okay. Anything further, Tim? All ready? Your turn.